This is a meeting of Thursday, January nineteen, twenty twenty-three to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Eric Hoker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pochek?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Please join, stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to community announcements. Mr. Schmidt, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, February fourth, at the Center for Senior Citizens from ten a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at six three zero nine zero nine five three zero two. The Village of Glendale Heights would like to remind residents to only park on paved surfaces on and around your property. Per village code, please do not park on your lawn and grass areas. Parking long term on your lawn can damage your vehicle and your property. If you observe someone parking on an unpaved surface, such as their lawn, please contact the Community Development Department at six three zero two six zero six zero three zero. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Siddiqui?
The Village of Glendale Heights is collecting broken or unused holiday lights. Lights can be dropped off at the Public Works Garage located at sixteen thirty-five Glen Allen Road on weekdays from seven thirty a.m. to three p.m. Lights accepted for recycling include all colors and length of mini lights, C-seven lights, C-nine lights, rope lights, L.E.D. lights. For more information on holiday lights recycling, please call six three oh or two six oh or six thousand.
Trustee Light, please.
Thank you. As a reminder to residents, please do not shovel, snowblow, or plow any snow into village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any snow for safe driving. If you have any questions, please call the police department's non-emergency number at six three zero two six zero six zero seven zero. The Glendale Heights Police Department is now hiring new officers. Applications are due by Friday, January twentieth, at nine p.m. Join a team of hard-working individuals who have dedicated their careers to protecting and serving the residents of Glendale Heights while staying true to our community-oriented policing. Applications are available at Village Hall or can be downloaded from the village website at www.glandalehighs.org/hr. There is a mandatory orientation and written exam on Saturday, January twenty-eighth, at Mark Court Middle School. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact the Glendale Heights Police Commission at six three zero nine oh nine five three nine eight. Thank you.
Clerk Schmidt, please.
During the Village of Glendale Heights and celebrating National Salute to Hospitalized Veterans Month by participating in the Valentine's for Veterans Collection efforts. Annually, the village delivers beautifully-written and decorated Valentine's cards, collected from the community to Illinois veteran homes and veteran hospitals. Drop off your Valentines at Village Hall by Wednesday, February first, to ensure timely delivery for Valentine's Day. Please do not decorate your cards with glitter, include social media contact information, or include envelopes with the cards. If you have any questions, please contact the Sports Hub at six three zero two six zero six zero six zero.
Trustee Maritato?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Register today for the Mother-Son Dance. Moms, put on your dancing shoes, and boys, come show off your best dance moves at our Candy Land-themed dance. Enjoy an activity-filled evening complete with dinner and dessert. The Mother-Son Dance will be Friday, February twenty-fourth, from seven p.m. to nine p.m. at Glendale Heights Golf Club. Please register by February nineteenth. The registration fee is sixty-five dollars for residents, seventy-five dollars for non-residents, and thirty dollars for each additional child. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at six three oh two six oh six oh six oh.
Trustee Pochek, please. You all done?
No.
Oh. No?
Dance the night away at the annual Daddy-Daughter Dance on Saturday, February twenty-fifth, from six thirty p.m. to nine p.m. at the Glendale Heights Golf Club. We will journey to Candy Land for this year's theme. The evening will include dancing, dinner, and every participant will receive a souvenir to remember the night. Register by February nineteenth. The registration fee is sixty-five dollars for residents, seventy-five dollars for non-residents, and thirty dollars for each additional child. For more information, call the Sports Hub at six three oh two six oh six oh six oh. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Pochek, please.
The police department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village during snowfall. There is no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow route for twenty-four hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for twenty-four hours after a snowfall of two inches or more. And there's no parking allowed on any village street for seventy-two hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department non-emergency number at six three zero two six oh six oh seven oh.
We now go on to public command for...
You got Mary to do.
Don't you got an agenda in front of you?
Uh, uh, Trustee Schroder, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Almighty.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is asking residents to check on their relatives and friends to assure that they are not in need of assistance in extreme weather conditions. Glendale Heights has a warming shelter in place and is ready to assist the needs of our residents. For more information, call the police department's non-emergency number at six three oh two six oh six oh seven oh. But as a reminder, in any emergency, you should always call nine one one for immediate assistance. Also, during periods of extreme weather, the police department will activate the senior call list to check on senior citizens. Seniors or their family members may ask to be placed on this list by picking up a form at the Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens or by calling the police department's non-emergency number at six three zero two six oh six oh seven oh or the senior, the Center for Senior Citizens at six three oh two six oh six oh five oh. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. We now go on to public comments of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board from public? None? You have the consent agenda. Before you would, Acting Village Administrator Doug Flynn, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent Agenda: One, approval of the special board meeting minutes of January third, twenty twenty-three. Two, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of January fifth, twenty twenty-three. Three, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of January fifth, twenty twenty-three. Four, approval of the accounts payable listing of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three in the amount of one million, nine hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. Five, resolution of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, adopting second quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget amendments. Six, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between Bloomingdale Township and the Village of Glendale Heights for mosquito abatement services for a four-year term. Seven, resolution authorizing the execution of Change Order Number Two Final for the North Avenue I.N.I. repairs Phase Project in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eight, a motion to approve Pay Request Number Three Final to Vizu Sewer of Illinois for the North Avenue I.N.I. repair in the total amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Nine, a motion to approve Pay Request Number Twelve to V Three Construction Group Limited for the East Branch Tributary Number Two Channel Maintenance in total amount not to exceed seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. Ten, motion to approve Pay Request Number Fifteen to Joseph J. Henderson and Son for the Digest Rehabilitation Project in total amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Eleven, motion to approve Pay Request Number Four to Resource Environmental Solutions, LLC, for the Klein Creek Restoration Project in total amount not to exceed three hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. Twelve is approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Maritato? And second, Trustee Schroder?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion. None? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there's none. New business. Number one, a motion to waive first reading on new business item two dash five. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business items two to five? Trustee Schroder?
So moved.
And Trustee, there are two people. I don't know who's the first. Light?
Second.
Second. Discussion. None? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item two to five is approved. Number two, an ordinance amending the Operation Policy Manual of the Village of Glendale Heights to include a policy and procedure regarding family bereavements leave. First reading waived, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three? A need, motion. Trustee Maritato?
So moved.
Trustee Light? Second. Discussion. None? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three is approved. Number three, an ordinance to authorize the renewal of an entertainment permit for live entertainment for Pronto's Restaurant located at twenty-six sixty Bloomingdale Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. First reading is waived, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero four. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero four? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schroder?
Second.
Discussion. Yes.
Is it the same entertainment they usually have all every year, Doug? Or is something new or...?
I think it's just the annual entertainment permit to allow for the same entertainment they've always had. It's a renewal.
All right, thank you.
I had a bad joke in my head, but it's just a renewal.
Anybody else? None? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero four is approved. Number four, an ordinance to authorize the renewal of an entertainment permit for live entertainment for Schnur's Plats located at seven twenty-nine East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. First reading is waived, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five. Trustee Schmidt? And second is Trustee Siddiqui?
So moved. Second.
Is there... Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty... They did already?
Yep.
Okay, discussion. None? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five is approved. Number five, an ordinance to authorize the insurance, insurance of an entertainment permit for live entertainment for Jack's Pub and Grill located at three thirty-eight East Army Tail Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. First reading is waived, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero six. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero six? Trustee Pochek?
So moved.
Second, Trustee Light?
Second.
Discussion. None? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero six is approved. Public discussion of agenda items. We now go on public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda items only?
Michael Ontiveros, Glendale Heights. Just for clarification on new business, the items two through four are for renewal of an entertainment permit for live entertainment. But my understanding is that Jack's Pub and Grill has always provided entertainment in the past. Why would this be different to authorize an issuance? Did they expire on their permit? Or is this stated incorrectly? I believe it might be stated incorrectly. We'll go ahead and take a look at that. Okay, thank you.
Executive Session, number one, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific... We will... I will read this.
Yeah, at the end.
And then committee will hold. Then we'll go, you know. Dismissal of specific employees of public body pursuant to open meeting act five, LNI compiled statute one twenty oblique to C one. Is there a motion to suspend the village board meeting and go to committee of the whole meeting? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second? Trustee Siddiqui, second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light? You have the committee of the whole meeting.
Thanks. All right. All right, I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting for January twenty or January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. Ms. Clerk, can you please note who's present?
Noted.
Noted, thank you. Does anyone have any additions or deletions? Mohammed?
Whistleblower protection.
For what?
Whistleblower protection.
Whistleblower protection. Okay. Did you get that, Marie?
No.
What was it?
Whistleblower protection.
Okay, anyone else? No one else? All right. Let's move this along then. All right. We're going to presentations. Number one, I got a presentation by F.H. Fashion regarding athletic fields and use of job order contracts.
Yeah, excuse me, Mike.
Have you had an addition?
No.
Trustee Maritato, I changed the order of the C.O.W. late this afternoon, and the agendas were not updated. So I wanted to get the presenters out of here before we had a discussion about any other topics.
Okay, but committee recommendations.
We're going to go back to that. That comes after the presentations.
That comes after presentations. Yeah, they're first up here on this.
And the public comment will come after the committee recommendations.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, sorry, guys.
No, no problem, Mike.
All right. The presentation. I guess we have some representatives from F.H. Fashion? Can you come on up to the podium? Let's hear this.
Mr. Leo Wright, Senior Vice President for F.H. Fashion, is going to talk to you about job order contracting and the use of F.H. Fashion for design and build of our athletic fields.
Okay, great.
Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you for allowing me to present. My name is Leo Wright. I'm a Senior Vice President with F.H. Fashion. My associate, Tom Cross, is a Vice President with F.H. Fashion also. And I'm here to discuss cooperative contracts for construction. The term is used... One of the terms used is indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, job order contracting, and general government service contract. There you go, one ahead. Let me go backwards. Yeah. Okay. Come on. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So what is job order contracting? You know, the term job order country is generally referred to as J.O.C., J.O.C. It's an indefinite quantity term contract started over thirty years ago in the Chicago area about nineteen ninety-two. First contract was with the Chicago Department of Transportation. But it's a publicly advertised and competitively bid contract. It's indefinite quantity. So when you're bidding the contract, there's no set job. You're bidding construction task catalogs. Generally, the owners are... Give you a range of projects. They might be included. It might be athletic fields. It might be for public works. It could be for specific to fire or libraries or what have you. But generally, any type of construction project could be completed with this program. So what makes it legal is the state statute that you see there, five thirty-five government joint purchases. And generally, there proposes a request for proposal, which means you're going to get the most qualified contractor. So what that means is, you know, it comes down to your staffing, financial abilities, history doing this type of program, and, you know, referrals. And then there's a pricing element that's associated with construction task catalogs. The widely-used construction task catalog in this area is R.S. Means Facilities and E. Gorian. So these task catalogs have probably three hundred thousand line items that are included. So everything is broken out to the square foot, cubic yard, square yard. Everything is very itemized when a cost proposal is presented. Owners have the ability to use predetermined prices to get their construction projects done in a very timely manner. So the benefits of J.O.C. It's not here to replace, you know, your lump sum process or your term contracts that you may have with various vendors. It's just another tool on your belt to expedite small to medium-sized jobs that, you know, you could call them nuisance jobs or you could call them emergency, political emergency jobs to... To get in the field faster, get a bill, and get completed. You know, one of the advantages is that you have certainty on the prices. The construction task catalogs that we use are updated on a quarterly basis. You save time upfront. A lot of the small towns that we work with really don't have the staff to be dedicated to managing all these jobs. With this program, the management's included, the field supervision's included. So we cover the project from cradle to grave. We help you design it. We help you if engineering's involved. We have the ability to bring professional architects and engineers under our umbrella to come up with the proper documents to give you a cost proposal. Here's a great slide that shows the benefits of J.O.C. versus traditional bidding. You know, a regular project with a full design that is put out to competitive bid, by the time the A and E firm gets done with it, the bid documents are formulated, it goes out to bid, it gets advertised, it goes through the bidding process, and then a purchase order gets out there. Generally, you know, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty days, right? Without design, it's generally sixty days. Generally, with the J.O.C. process, depending on the complexity of the job, it's, you know, three weeks, four weeks. That's it from when we first come out to look at the work to a purchase order could be issued, and we're actually mobilizing in the field. And what makes it legal is that state statute because it's already competitive... The contract's already competitively bid and awarded, right? The contract will be directly with us. If there's any items that you feel that's important, like minority participation, use of local subcontractors, that's written into the scope of work, and we do the best we can to fulfill that. That's written into the scope of work and we do the best we can to fulfill that. So. Who uses this? So I got a list together of neighboring communities in the suburbs who's. Who are currently using, have used it in the past, you can see there's quite an extensive list. You know, and the work ranges from. We're doing a council chamber at City Hall in Aurora right now. Remodeling their council chamber. Park districts, wastewater treatment facilities, police stations, firehouses, working libraries. Any type of municipal work that you have could be done under this program. Here's just a couple testimonials, this is from Greg Leighton from the. Bloomingdale School District, he used the program, was satisfied, he liked the way, you know, it expedited his projects. Rick Holt. From the city of Elgin, he's the facility manager out there. He uses it on a regular basis. We're kind of like their in-house contractor there. Here's some various cooperative contracts that are available. So on the bottom, you'll see a list of national contracts, N C P A, TIPS, Sourcewell, Equalis, P C A, the Byboard. So. When cooperative contracting for construction first came relevant in the greater Chicago area. These contracts were being utilized. But then, you know, the city of Aurora. Lake Moore, Elmwood Park were using these contracts on their own and decided to put out their own solicitations. Where, you know, there's always a fee that's associated with these things, but now the fee goes back locally to. To local municipality who hosts the program. And that, and with these, it's the same product, the same construction task catalog, but. You know, Glendale Heights might already be members of N C P A or Sourcewell or TIPS or one of these are ready to buy. Police cars or paper or pencils or whatever commodities, it was always, you know, it was first designed for commodities, but now it's been. Graduated to construction. You know, our experience as a general contractor, Passion family goes back over a hundred years in the Chicago area. From built, you know, from about with the building of Navy Pier through the years. F H. Passion has been in existence for over thirty-five years, started out with doing the construction job order contracting for United States Post Office. Then got into heavy highway, I'm sure you see our vehicles on two ninety-four, do a lot of work with. Illinois Tollway Authority, I D O T. We have a, we're broken out into three major divisions, heavy highway, building and preferred projects, which handles the smaller to midsize job order contracting. You know, so the best part about this, it's really a design built light, no matter what project you're working with. We work in conjunction. With you. We. You know, we can have discussions, we can give you budgetary numbers. We could bring in engineering firms or design firms, so it's generally a conversation, it's not that. You know, we're given a set of plans and we're only bidding what's on the plans. You know, we do that, that we work off plans, but we'll work off a written scope of work, a walkthrough, we'll develop the scope with you. And the best part about it is we, it eliminates a lot of unnecessary change orders. So we try and give you a price for the job as a whole, we don't want. We don't want to bid a job and something's not on the drawings that we know that needs to be there. So we're gonna give you the price for what you need, not necessarily what you ask for, and then we'll explain it, why it's needed. Or we could, we value engineer the project to help maybe do it a better way or save some dollars. But. The best thing about J O C is, you know, it's built for speed, it's a non-avocarial relationship. You're assured that the subcontractors that we're gonna bring to the dance are qualified. Insured, you know, we're union shops, we're gonna bring all union trades to the field with us. It's not like it's a lump sum job, I'm sure everybody's seen it where. You put a job out to bid. Low contractor probably doesn't do such a great job and you're kind of stuck with a product and maybe an inferior product where he doesn't finish and you gotta finish it on your own. This program is used a lot around, actually around the country to finish work that isn't completed by other contractors. Just because procurement laws or whatever, they feel it's a better way to. Get things done quickly. Like I say, it's not here to replace anything, you still probably want to bid. Other work, but this is just another tool on your belt and. You know, once you start using it. Most people who use it really like it, they find the convenience of it and. The ease of use, you know, some are larger work, we just finished some major work at Schaumburg Boomer Stadium, did a major restoration there. And, you know, real briefly, how do you start the process? Well, it's really just contacting us, or you could contact one of the national co-ops, but generally. Contact us, we contact them, so all these agencies that were affiliated with these cooperative programs, we send reports to them on a monthly basis. Reporting with purchase orders we have and any funding that may be going to them. So, in short, it's. It's a great way to expedite small to mid-sized jobs. And any type of work can be done and completed under this process.
Thank you, Leo, and trustee Sdiki, just one second, I just wanted to. The reason that they're here today is that we are, next board meeting, are gonna be bringing back the agreement for, hopefully, for the board to approve. An agreement with Passion to build our athletic fields that was approved at the mid-budget. And. We don't have the knowledge or the people in-house to, to handle the excavation contractors, to handle the turf install. F H. Passion would do that. Working with. Them and working off one of the local cooperative contracts is about a five percent savings over what we would be doing originally. Through other of our cooperative contracts. So it's a, it's a price savings for us, we have a general contractor that will oversee the project from design to finish. And we won't have to, to dedicate. Somebody kind of as a project lead on it. They will take care of all that.
Right. Mohammed, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think. You gave me the answer, because I'm gonna ask you, sir, what is the purpose of all this? So you. So how we approach it, like how you know that, you know, is it like we gave? Put it in a newspaper?
No, so we learned of this J O C program through other municipalities that are using them.
Okay.
And we sat down and met with them, and we've actually met with them three or four times now, actually. But we sat down and met with them to learn more about the J O C process and about this cooperative process. And like what we heard, and we've worked out some, you know, preliminary. Logistics of the fields. They're, you know, they're building in the cost of what it's gonna cost to excavate the fields, giving us a price if we can meet that price that we put into the budget at mid-budget. And, you know, if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't know how to, we'd have to hire somebody to do that anyway. To get the pricing and the excavation and all that. We know the number for what the turf is, but we don't know the number of everything else. And we certainly don't have the in-house expertise or personnel to do it. The excavation and all of that. So we've been working with Passion to. Go through all those numbers, work through the numbers, get the budget, get the estimates. To bring a contract forward to you guys, to the board, with numbers that are pretty hard set numbers that you can approve. For the upgrade of our athletic fields that were approved at, really tonight, with the approval of the mid-budget.
But why only Passion, why not any other company?
Cause they're really the only ones that do this.
Okay, they are the only one?
Not the only ones, but. Honestly, we haven't, we haven't researched how many. They're the most recommended to us, they're the ones that we know about, so we sat down with them.
I mean, the fair process would be if we just put it in somewhere in our website or. Or paper or something and asking like, you know, who will come and, and based on that, then we can make a decision, not only just. One company coming here and telling us that they will do the best job and you'll say, okay, yes. Because what I am understanding, sir, when you say that you are going to take care of the contractors and the. Small contractors won't do the job, I don't agree with that, like, you know, it's, I believe that. Anyone can do if you give them a chance, so. I, I, what I understand from your presentation that you are a Walmart of.
We're a true general contractor, we sell contract work.
Yeah, so it's. I mean, why not, you know, because it's a, it's a huge contract, it's not, shouldn't be just. Inviting one and then, you know, discussing that. They will be doing all this, I would say that, you know, let it out and. Bring a couple of the companies and based on that, we can decide what, what is the best for the village.
We can, we can research what other general contractors do this type of contracting.
Yeah. That's all.
Yeah, so you're gonna be, you're the general contractor, which I, so you get all the, you get all the contractors, they all work under you? You give us a price. Now Doug, if, if. He comes back with estimates. That are way too high for us. Do we owe them any money?
No, no.
If we decide we don't want to do it, do we owe, do we owe them any money?
I don't know the answer to that question, we haven't signed a contract with them yet, so.
No, there's, there's, there's no cost for us to come and look at your work or give you an estimate. There's no obligation to use this whatsoever.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and as far as, we're the only general contractor with the local municipalities, there might be a couple others in. Chicago area under these national cooperatives, but. As far as, you know, we're the largest job order contractor in the nation, we do it. You know, we're a six to eight hundred million dollar a year company. And we do over a hundred million dollars in these small projects. You know, in twenty-three states.
I know Passion been around for a very long time.
Yeah, so we do it then, you know, we're only as good as our last job and, you know, we know we're not here to do all your work, but. It's repeat business, again, we don't really advertise this, the cooperative programs don't advertise it, it's really word of mouth. You know, that's how it's really grown in the past ten years in the suburbs.
If we were to go with you for the. Athletic fields, are we under any obligation to utilize your services for other projects that might come into the village?
Not at all, only if we did a good job and you want to bring us back to the dance.
Okay.
Chester.
Do you, when your subcontract is, this type of work, the excavation.
Yep.
Who do you normally use for that?
We have selected firms, we're always trying to pick the right contractor for the right job. So as a large general contractor, we self-perform a lot of civil work, as you probably see on the tollway and. I D O T projects, but, you know, there's, we have such a wide variety of contractors in this program. And the best part about it is we use the right contractor for the right job, and when we call them, they know. You know, chances are very good they're gonna get the work from us and, you know, so they put us first in line, and then. You know, we try and use local contractors in the area too, because when they want to come to an area and, you know, have the contractor say, well, you got a big general here stealing all our work. We give them the opportunity to work with us and a lot of them. Work with us that may not have the. Office ability or whatever to bid work direct. So we bond the contract, if bonding's required, we make sure that all the subcontractors have the proper insurance before they walk on site. That they're qualified, they're union, and if there's a contractor that we're utilizing that you may have a bad experience when you don't want us to use them, we don't use them. So it's a good way to vet it, just like going back and if there was a lump sum job and you got a contractor and he didn't do such a great job. So, you know, we stand behind everything, we don't stand behind, you know, we stand behind the subcontractor's work, if the subcontractor's not doing a sufficient job to our standards. We'll replace him, but generally, we're not bringing a bad subcontractor to the dance.
All right, we'll keep our fingers crossed.
No, you don't have to cross your fingers.
No, we have to, I don't trust anybody anymore. Everyone, you know, they, they can do everything, but when it comes to doing it.
Yeah.
They fail.
We got, we got a quite extensive resume.
Mayor, go ahead.
I concur with trustee Sdiki, we should invite also other vendors, you know, contractors.
I'm sorry.
I'm talking with, you know.
We'll, 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 we'll research and see if there's anywhere out there, Keith, we'll do that tomorrow.
Sure. All right, I just wanted to state, I, one thing that caught my ear really quick was the, I hate change orders, a lot.
Yeah.
You know, I see them happen quite a bit with, like you said, bids coming in really low and then change orders happening very. Abundantly, you know, throughout the process, which really bothers me. You said you try and eliminate the change orders and, and go through a full bidding process before we even think about it.
We're gonna vet every job complete, I mean, generally the change orders with J O C are generated by the owners. So if we're painting the council chambers and you wanted the rest of the hallway painted, it could be a change order or a new job or whatever, I mean. There's always gonna be an unforeseen when you're digging, but if you take the right precautions, we eliminate, you know, the risk.
Okay.
We try and look above the ceilings, below the floors, behind the walls for any hidden conditions, asbestos or what have you. You know, we're very, you know, well groomed in what we're doing.
Anyone else any questions? Oh, Mary, how are you?
I do, I just have one question, we're, we're just seeing this for the first time, or else I'm just seeing it for the first time. And we don't have to make a definite decision tonight.
No, I'm not asking you, I was, this was strictly educational for, for the board.
Okay.
That we bring something forward at the next board meeting or the board meeting after that, so you are aware of what the process is and how it works and who they are.
All right, cause I'd really like to hear a little bit more about this before we decide to have somebody do all of our construction.
Sure, I mean, please check us out. One thing I wanted to add to, you know, the cost proposal that we give you, it's broken out, like I said earlier. It's a very itemized cost proposal, everything's broken out in unit prices, but then it becomes a lump sum job, right? So. If there was a project that had ten cubic yards of concrete, we had to use eleven cubic yards. We're not charging you for eleven cubic yards, we calculate it, then it's a lump sum job after the proposal, it's accepted. So it's not, there's no nitpicking, you know, if anybody comes from other backgrounds like. I D O T or C D O T jobs, everything's a unit price, you get paid by how many units you put in place. This is a lump sum job, you use unit prices to establish the lump sum price. So if we're remodeling this room and I had. Three hundred square feet of painting, three hundred square feet of painting would be in your proposal. And everything associated with it.
All right, any other questions for anyone?
Yeah, Mike, I have one.
Okay.
Regarding the fields. Doug, have you ever checked with anybody else in this local area that had their fields redone?
In regards to what?
Well, excavating and putting in a little, a new sod, sod or whatever, astroturf. That's what this program is about, right? We want it redone with the astroturf.
Right.
Have you checked with any other village that had some of this work done?
I've talked to a lot of them.
And what do they recommend?
Really haven't talked about the companies that did it, we just talked about the process, I mean. Talked about just how beneficial it's been for them and the playability and how many teams get to play and how many kids get to play. I really didn't talk to anybody about, you know, the nuts and bolts of how they built it.
Keith, you want, you want to add?
I was gonna say, so.
From the perks?
When we met with them, the first thing we did is we checked some of their references, so we made phone calls to three of the different park districts in the area that have done work with Passion. And got rave reviews, and that's part of the reason why we've proceeded to kind of get more information is that. They do come. From the people that we talk to very well. Versed in what they do.
Any other questions? Comments? Leo, thank you very much for that.
All right, I thank you for allowing me to speak and present to you.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you.
All right. Number two. Northern Illinois Municipal Electrical Consortium, the NYMAC purchase of electricity. Adam, you're up.
Yes, thank you, my name is Adam Hoover, I'm with NYMAC. We work with Bill to help purchase electricity for some of your own commed accounts here, but I'm up here to talk today and I've worked with Doug on the municipal aggregation program. So we have helped run your current aggregation program with Elgo Energy for, I believe, the last two or three years. And your contract is expiring in April. I will try to give you a quick synopsis of what aggregation program is. And it could be pretty detailed, so I'll be brief. But aggregation pretty much allows for the bulk purchasing of energy through residence accounts to bring a benefit of either a lower cost to residents or to bring green energy or a civic contribution. Your current program right now, for the last two or three years, has allowed a hundred percent of the energy purchased by Elgo, which is for all of your residents here, it has been green energy. So you could technically say that there's no other city in the nation that has bought more, a bigger percentage of green energy than Glendale Heights and a couple other programs we work with. So it's been very successful and this comes at no extra cost to the residents, the current program has the residents paying the commed rate. Even if they're with Elgo or with their commed. So that is the current program that is expiring, it allows for the purchase of green energy at no cost to residents. So we look to renew that program in April and our suppliers, as you guys have seen, the market has been a little crazy, and so they are not able to renew the exact same program. At nearly the same contribution, they're offering five percent green energy at a really small amount. Which we don't think is much, I'll just give you my personal opinion there. And then there's another option, and this is our favorite option, that allows the residents to find a lower fixed rate for all residents. And so we are working on that, and Doug and I have consulted on this a little bit and our, we've gone to our suppliers and we have a couple very attractive rates. But what we would propose is suspending the aggregation program till April or May, when the commed rate comes out. And then I will likely probably come back around that time and propose the exact option. To kind of put it briefly, we are seeing numbers of offering residents a rate of eight cents per kilowatt hour, the current commed rate is about ten cents. But we do not know what the current commed rate will look like, commed rate changes every June, pretty much. So while eight cents looks great, we do not know what it'll look like in May. And so while I think eight cents is a great rate, I, our, our best advice is to kind of suspend the program and come back in May to make sure that we can find a, a rate lower. For residents than eight cents, or lower than the commed rate. So I'm here to kind of inform and answer any questions about potentially suspending the program.
Adam, if you could touch a little bit on the article that came out in the paper saying commed's gonna raise rates in twenty twenty-four, cause they gotta raise four billion dollars, can you explain to the board? How that really doesn't affect?
Yeah, so every bill, this also is happening when Nycor is raising their rates as well, every bill is broken down into three. Every bill is broken down into three different sections. The supply portion, which is where we come in and we help find different suppliers, whether it's ComEd or Nycor, we find different suppliers and we can lower rates on the supply portion. Okay? Taxes and delivery section, ComEd and the state of Illinois and Nycor will always, that stays the same everywhere. So let's say you're paying 10 cents per kilowatt hour right now in the supply portion of the bill, we can hopefully help lower that to eight cents one day. We can, even if we go to eight cents, the taxes and delivery portion will still remain the same. So yes, ComEd and Nycor are going to raise their rates, but that does not impact the supply portion of the bill, which is where we come in and help. Hopefully that answers the question.
They're raising the taxes and the fees, not the actual rate.
Yeah. And in fact, we think the, we think the ComEd rate is actually going to drop in June. And that's why we're a little cautious to, to move forward, even if we think we have an attractive rate. Potentially.
Phil, go ahead.
On the news this evening, there was an article about pay per income option where people who have lower incomes would pay less and be subsidized by people who are, have higher incomes with both Nycor and ComEd. Are you aware of that? And if so, how would that affect your program?
I, I don't know about the exact program you're speaking of. Maybe that's new. There are a couple of programs out there that help lower income residents with their, with their utility bills. And if we ran an aggregation program, those, first of all, anyone has the option to opt out of the aggregation program at any time. So if you do not want to be part of the program, anyone can opt out, no fees, everyone has the right to do that. But second of all, our rate would not impact their lower, their, their rebates they would be receiving.
Chester.
If you set a fee, a rate, how long would that last? A year, two years, three years?
Great question. So we have one, two, and three-year offers from multiple suppliers. And so I don't think Doug and I are proposing moving forward with this. I feel safe saying that. And so we have one, two, and three-year offers. I think in May, when hopefully we come back, that is probably a question we would ask. Do you want to go with a one, two, or three-year deal? Do you want to have, pay a little bit extra for green energy or do you want to go no green energy? So those are questions we have, or we will tackle in the future.
All right.
What was the last contract that we had with you? For how many years?
I should have looked it up. It's either two, two? Yeah, two.
It was for two years?
Yes. And that's the one that's expiring in April.
Yes.
Yes.
So basically what, any other questions? Sorry. No, nobody? All right. Basically, so what you're looking for, Doug, is just, this is just for information only?
Strictly to, to educate the board on the fact that, and the public, that our contract's expiring. They'll see no change. They'll notice no change. And when the new ComEd rates come out, April, May, that we will bring Adam back and we will offer the board some options on what contract they're into.
Awesome. That works. Adam, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Adam.
All right. Now we'll go on to public comment. Anyone in the public, is there anyone not like to?
Committee recommendations there?
No, we got public comment on that. Any public comments from anyone out in the public that would like to address this board?
Are you tabling item number three?
No, that would be under discussion regarding.
No, I, I changed the agenda prior to the board meeting. And I apologize, I didn't give it out to the public, but the agenda's changed a little bit. It will come back to that item after we do public discussion.
Thank you.
Right.
We have a Zoom person who wants to talk?
Go ahead, Zoom person.
It is me. I'm Rebecca Tybor. I just wanted to, there's been something on my mind for a while and I just wanted to say my piece. And I think I'm going to be done mentioning anything about board meetings. It's just that I know that Mohammed is being blamed for being related to somebody. But I wanted to talk about that somebody. His name is Sohal Bari. And he's been on the plan commission for 22 years. He brought cricket into the, into town over 20 years ago. He's been on the International Day Committee. He's been brought in Pakistan Independence Day here in the village of Glendale Heights. And the one thing I do know is that the mayor, Coker, and Sohal Bari have never gotten along, to the best of my knowledge. Anyway, I could be wrong. But Sohal has put in more time in this village than Mayor Coker or trustee Mohammed combined. And I, I'm not putting anybody down or anything like that. I'm just trying to let you know my feelings that, I do know that it just seemed like when the mayor became mayor, he had two things on his agenda. One was to take cricket away from Sohal. And two is to take Pakistan Day away from Sohal, a man that has been involved with this village for years, 20, over 20 years, been on the plan commission for 22 years. I'm not saying that Mohammed has been on committees here as well. But for somebody that has never been to any of our events, to come in and try to give cricket away to, from somebody that has spent time in this village, and I'm pretty sure he has spent thousands of dollars on those cricket fields, if not tens of thousands of dollars. And I know it's one big, huge thing that the mayor really wants is just to get Sohal off of everything. Take, take that cricket away. Take Pakistan Independence away. You know, I, I don't want his name, you know, mentioned. It, to me, is basically, those are the only two things that were on the agenda since he walked into the office, is to get rid of Sohal. So I don't know what's going on with cricket. All I know is that if you do take that cricket away from him, I would strongly hope that you would compensate him for the years and the money that he has put in to those fields. And we're probably talking tens of thousands of dollars. Because it wasn't just the, the village, it was Sohal. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Can he respond? Mr. Chairman, can I respond to her or not?
Oh, well, let's just finish public comment. I know we got people out here waiting to talk. Who's next?
I don't have my walker, so I'm walking more slowly.
Me, too.
I was at the meeting this morning. And the mayor sure put himself forward as an attorney. So I know this has been knocked around a lot. When did you pass the bar? Oh, I'm, I'm not going to talk. Okay, that's fine. You're such a child. And then, when are you going to appoint the people that you are supposed to appoint? That are you, you're just leaving hanging? No answer. Man, you're good. You're just going to sit there? You're such a strong leader. Can you at least tell me? How many votes did you actually win by?
I got 475.
No, how many did you win by? There's a majority.
Two vote.
Two, that's.
That counts. Each vote counts. Sorry, I denied your permission. I was the first, seconded, Mr. Mike so far.
Mr. Mike, I love that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hi, Ed Pope from Main Avenue.
Hi, Michael. How are you?
I'm fine.
This is just, really for my own, I really don't understand this Jock thing at all. But my question to anyone, probably Doug, I'm guessing. But I thought by ordinance for subcontract that large, you had to put it out for bid unless that worked. There were no other contractors that did that kind of work.
So this is, it's all going through, the job order contract really is us going to what is our state bid contracts and getting all state bid pricing?
But like Mohammed and the mayor were saying, you know, does that, doesn't that exclude any like other bidders? What if they're not in the state program?
We wouldn't bid from them anyway.
So they, they would have to be?
We, we only really generally buy state bid product.
Because, I mean, you know, we redid Cameron Park, we did Nazos Park, we had people do this type of work.
All contract, all priced from state bid pricing.
So even if you didn't use Jock, this is still, would still go out through the state bid process?
We would still get the best pricing we could through this, the source, the sources that we have for procurement of job order contracting or we use Sourcewell, we use other national cooperatives for our purchase of product. Which is at a greater cost, correct, Doug? Yes. It would be at a greater cost.
But it doesn't answer my question, though, about the bidding, though. Is, this is like a, this is like a single source vendor that you're saying Jock is the vendor.
The statute allows these consortiums to be used, like a state bidding contract or Sourcewell. You can do this under the state statute.
Okay. But it's like, but still has to be rectified by them or ratified by them?
They, they provide all the people.
No, no, I mean the board. So.
Oh, correct, yeah.
So they're going to come in, they're going to surprise, supply you with the bids, and then you guys are going to look through it and decide they're the right bidder or not? Because it just seemed like, it just seemed weird, single source to me. I just couldn't wrap my head around it.
It's sort of like the AstroTurf that goes to the fields, right? The turf is state bid. It's, it's the best price you can get. If you went to the market, you'd pay 10%, 12%, 20% more.
Would you, though? I mean, that's what purchasing's for, to get you the best bid.
No, you wouldn't. Eight contracts are always the cheapest contracts.
Okay. Well, you just answered my question. My question simply was, you know, on a contract so large, how could it be single sourced like that? I didn't, I can't, I couldn't understand it. It's not, still not even sure I'm 100% on it, but you're making more sense anyway.
And Ed, when it comes back, it's going to come back as a final product, not like choose between A, B, and C to do this job and A, B, and C to do this job. That's being done by the general contractor.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ed, before you leave, just like our automobiles, village vehicles, we don't go to Sunrise or Nissan. We have to go to a state bid.
We could, we could, to that point, go to Sunrise or Nissan and buy our cars.
But you get a lot more money there, won't you?
We get, the, the price we get on cars, you couldn't touch in a lot at a car dealership. The discounts are tremendous, right?
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Ed.
Good evening, Mr. Light and Board. Christopher Epstein, Club Drive, Glendale Heights, Illinois. What I wanted to bring up is, we're discussing this cricket field situation. That has been given, I believe, a no bid contract for over 20 years. So in reality, we were losing, based on the last bid, approximately $20,000 to $30,000 a year. So over a 20-year period, if that was the same, we've lost $400,000 to $600,000. And who's paying for that? The upkeep and everything for the fields. I guarantee you, it's more than what the contract was given. And also, baseball fields were taken away from the kids. This is, these fields are supposed to be for the kids, not for some grown adults that are, oh, we can pay to play, basically is what it's been. So let's go with the open bid contract. If Mr. Bari comes in with the highest bid and it's good, that's fine. But none of this no bid, low bid contracts without the approvals and the knowledge of the village of Glendale Heights residents. It's really been a joke for over 20 years. Luckily now, we got some rules and things within the village with nepotism and things like that. And no, no bid contracts are big ones. I like the consortium idea. My dad worked in construction. He was very aware of it. He built nuclear plants. So from that standpoint, that's the way to go, not this pay to play situation that we've had. Thank you.
So how about Glendale Heights? I want to just correct the math for Mr. Epstein. 20 years, $30,000, $400,000. 2000, we build a cricket pitch, I spend the money. And now these days, if you build one pitch, it costs $25,000. Second ground, we built in 2005, same amount of money, and I paid it. 2018, the end of 2018, we got the third field. Village just spent a lot of money and we come to the agreement. So what he's talking about, 20 years, $20,000, he doesn't know anything. They just come, open their mouth and try to impress the public. So I just want to correct the thing, what it is. 22 years away from my kids, my family, I spend the cricket. I was the first one in suburb area beside Chicago, South Side, who brought the cricket here. And now people talking about all that, I should be getting credit while I spend the money and the time. And it's a fear to everyone. People coming now and claiming that they own this place, it's not going to happen. That's it. Thank you.
Michael Antiveros, Glendale Heights. Before my allotted time of five minutes begin, I would ask the village attorney and the board of trustees to allow me to speak freely without the intervention and then have the board or yourself, Mr. Kokar, respond to the questions thereafter. Is this acceptable to everybody?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Let's begin with the stipends. Has the village board of trustees made a decision to end stipends for trustees and the village president? Consider that. I want to applaud the village board members for reimbursing the village of Glendale Heights and the taxpayers of this community for any stipends paid out in the past. To date, Chadri Kokar has not. In reviewing Chadri Kokar's 2021 stipend payroll sheets, he was paid over $7,550 from June 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021. I'm still awaiting for the 2022 filings. In reading some of his billables at the rate of $50 per instance, he billed the taxpayers of Glendale Heights for multiple meetings with MSI, the Islamic Education Center, attendance for the, for Pakistan Day and Pakistan Independence Day, meeting with department heads. How is even that allowed? Speaking to residents, he actually refers to residents of Glendale Heights as common people as he did so in those meetings for the elections. Girl Scouts, even Brownies meetings, were being charged $50 per instance. And this one really is beyond anyone's comprehension that you, Chadri, would bill the taxpayers of Glendale Heights to attend to visitation wake services for our own residents. I think that's a shame. I say you should end the stipends, reimburse the taxpayers. And you, Chadri, you don't have any ethics or morals. You need to resign. Let's discuss litigation. As discussed in the December board meeting, I asked the village trustees and you, how many lawsuits are you personally involved in as it relates to the village of Glendale Heights? Who is paying your legal fees? And what is the cost to date that we taxpayers have had to pay out so far? If you lose any of these lawsuits or settle out of court, who is on the hook for all of these monies? Guess what? We, the taxpayers, are. The investigatory report available through FOIA concerning Chadri Kokar's dictator-type management style, discriminatory and retaliation tactics should be a major concern for the village itself and its residents. We've already lost great talent in Mike Marin and Joanne Keldrener as a result. Removing the current village administrator and human resource manager from the day-to-day decision-making process sets a dangerous precedence. The case for hiring an executive assistant to the village president and trustees is a perfect example of cronyism, nepotism. Cronyism refers to the act of appointing personal friends and associates to important or high-level positions, regardless of their qualifications. Nepotism, simply put, is favoring granted to relatives. You remove Ms. Lewis, the human resource manager, from the standard interviewing and. You remove Ms. Lewis, the human resource manager, from the standard interviewing and hiring process and you personally hired your best friend's daughter, Ms. Jee Sangha. In my eyes, this is a violation of the code of conduct here in Glendale Heights. On April 22nd of 2022, Ms. Ha Ha was offered by the village standard level one pay, of which Ms. Ha Ha accepted. But you, Mr. Kokar, then ordered an increase to pay level three effective immediately. Can you explain why? The report just stops short of suggesting criminal intent, but rather official misconduct on many fronts. However, being labeled as plain stupid and did not know better is no excuse for such actions, Mr. Kokar. Conclusion, we cannot afford another two years of this type of gross, inexcusable management style, let alone additional lawsuits. The board of trustees should, and I stress should, initiate a second investigation regardless of cost to taxpayers or fear of retaliation and hire a firm that has zero ties to the village to provide an independent and unbiased report. For the betterment of the village, its employees, and our residents, you, Mr. Kokar, need to resign. Can people at this point answer some of the questions I posed?
Mike, I can only say that with a lot of the stuff, I know we've addressed this at one point or another. You know, the stipends, yes, there were still those that were still out there and need to be attended to, yes, we know that. The litigation part, obviously, if something was said, yeah, we as a village have to cover his legal end of that, I know that with insurance, I'm assuming. And then, um, as far as the rest of it goes, I, I can't speak much of, on that.
Okay, well, I'd like to know again, in my presentation here, there has to be public information as to the costs we've incurred so far at taxpayers' expense for legal defense. We have a number on that.
I do not particularly have a number on that, um, don't know, Chester?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Ontiveros, I do have a number on this. Over 42 thou, $42,000 that the village, the residents had to pay for these stupid, stupid attorney fees. We were, we were accused of a lot of things and it came to zero. We were in the clear. And I'm talking about a couple trustees here, and all this money was spent, the residents' taxpayers' monies were spent foolishly. Now I don't know why Mr. Kokar can't answer any of your questions.
Mr. Light?
You are a very intellectual person, you are very knowledgeable, you know answer, you know.
You know I'm knowledgeable, you, you just explained it, so answer the gentleman.
Okay, guys, gentlemen, please. Mohammed, go ahead.
So Mr. Ontiveros, just to, as Mr. Pojak said, uh, there were investigation done for the trustees because of, um, hostile attitude. And I can give you the details, date by date, invoice number. On 11/01/22, invoice number 631975, we paid $10,855. On 11/01/22, 631976, invoice number, we paid $2,232.50. 10/01/22, invoice number 630749, we paid $357.13. September 1/22, we bid invoice number 629441, we paid $5,787.38. September 1/22, invoice number 629442, $1,930.63. January 1/2023, sixth invoice number 634544, $5,916.92. July 1/2022, invoice number 625079, $1,921.12. August 1/2022, 62, invoice number 626993, $2,608.62. August 1/2022, 626994, $5,449.50. July 1/22, 625080, invoice number $750. December 1/2022, invoice number 633254, $1,922, nine, uh, two, uh, $1,928.25. And December 1/2022, invoice number 633759, $2,253.30. If you add all those, it's $41,990.35, so around 42,000, I would say. So it's 41990 is the ballpark number.
Thank you. For the amount that you just provided to me, I'm going to make the assumption that this is still ongoing?
Yes, it's counting, so this is up till now.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, go ahead.
Yes. Mr. Mike.
Uh, Mr. Ontiveros, please.
Mike, easy, easy, you know. Otherwise, you would say you pronounce, you know, wrong way, you know.
Go right ahead.
I apologize. How much money you are spending, you are in the appellate court. How much money you have spent so far? Be honest, you know.
This is not part of our discussion, this is a separate matter.
I'm, I'm questioning you because you ask, you know.
I'm asking a question that concerns the village of Glendale Heights and its residents. Excuse me, you're asking me something outside the scope.
You want to answer or not? You, you say you, you don't want to answer, if you don't want. But how much money you have spent so far?
Why don't you ask to answer his question first?
Let, let me, let me talk, let me talk. He asked question, now it's my turn, you know. Let me talk. Yes, how much money you have spent?
It's irrelevant to this discussion, this outside discussion.
Very relevant, you are in litigation with me, you know. And you are talking.
You are using taxpayers' money, I use my own personal, zip it.
Basically, basically, okay, talk first, okay, I will answer.
You were rude this morning in the election meetings, you gave nobody an opportunity to talk and then when someone decided to speak, you threw them out. That's an injustice for the people here in Glendale Heights.
Done?
No, I'm not done. You wanna go there with me, that's fine.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay? What I bring to the table here is representing the residents of Glendale Heights and the taxpayers' money. The money that I spend is my own money that I work very hard for and I rely on nobody else's input. So my personal affairs are no business of yours. This is a governmental body that's open to the public, so stay out of my business.
Okay, number one, basically you are loser. You lost this election, number one. Number two, let me answer, let me. Number two, you have filed frivolous lawsuit against me and against Colorcoff, DuPage County. You are losing so far, you know. What will happen tomorrow in the appellate court or LNI Supreme Court, I don't know.
Is this how you treat the residents, calling people losers?
You are loser, you know.
I have never called you anything other than, quote, "are". Have her some respect for the residents.
Okay, hey, we had enough.
You don't want to answer? How much money you spent, you don't want to answer? Okay. Let me now talk about, you know, uh, money 42,000, you know. That 24, uh, 2, uh, 42,000 litigation, I don't know what is the exact amount, you know, how much, uh, how did he get this information, I don't know, I don't have any knowledge, I have no information. He got, you know, where he got, you know. That lawsuit was filed by, uh, Siddiki, Tracy Siddiki's brother-in-law. He's sitting over here. He filed defamation suit against me that has been dismissed, you know. Because it was frivolous. No merit, you know. His relative. Right? Second lawsuit is filed by our employee, you know, I don't want to name, you know. And there are like, in addition, that's still there. And there are like five, six, 10, um, uh, investigation against me, you know. All those have been dismissed, you know. No allegation can be proved, you know. I'm not controlling anyone. This is the awareness, this is the way I am working. In my one and a half year tenure, there are like about six to eight investigation, three or four lawsuit against me. And I'm winning so far everything.
Do you happen to recognize a pattern?
In last, in last 30 years, Beckar, Beck, you know, Beckar, she work, you know, 20 years over here. Did she talk against any, uh, against, you know, Linda Jackson? Did she question, you know, the board to Linda Jackson? No. I did not fire her, I did not do anything. She got retirement, she got incentive, she went home, now she's becoming a reformer.
Can you keep it to the, the questions that were asked? We were getting off subject.
No, no, he asked me question, so.
Well, I know, it was on, it was on litigation.
And let me talk about, you know, uh, this cricket ground, you know. Cricket ground, I'm not against anybody. So Hailbary, if he wants, he can compete. Everybody should have equal and fair access to the village property, period. That is Chadri Kokar. Today, Mr. Siddiki, uh, mentioned that, you know, the one bid, you know, it should be, you should invite other. I said, okay, I favor, I, I'm in support of that. That is Chadri Kokar. I am doing for the best of my village. If there are 20, 10, 15 people who come and they say, oh, Kokar's pattern is not good, you know, he's administrate, uh, uh, you know, dictator, this and that. I love to be that, I am the best person so far, you know, in the history of Glendale Heights. I am the first person who won election case in the appellate court, in the LNI Supreme Court. Pro se, I meant by myself, I did not hire attorney. That is Chadri Kokar. Now people know what's going on in the village. That is Chadri Kokar. People are laughing, I, I don't care if these are laughing or not. But that is Chadri Kokar, awareness is coming. Linda Jackson was getting $16,000 roughly every month, you know, 9,000 plus, you know, other. Nobody questioned her, you know. I am Chadri Kokar, everybody is questioning me, you know. You said, you know, this should be eliminated, you know, stipend, you know, those $50 whatever, you know. I convened committee, I put, you know, Mary Schroeder and Mr. Uh, second, you know, Pojak, you know, trustee Pojak. Asked them why they did not suspend or revoke that, you know, remove, you know. I wanted to remove, you know. But they said, no, I have to follow. They have number, what they are doing, yes. Any other question? I'm ready for it.
Okay, well, again, you didn't re-answer the question about Ms. Ha Ha, why you gave her a promotion to level three. Please answer the question.
Okay, we hired, you know, what's, uh, Mike.
Mayor, don't answer that question. Not, not here, it's not, it's not a public discussion.
Okay, you can come to my office, you can come.
It's just a personnel issue that really shouldn't be discussed.
Yeah, right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Glendale.
Agreed.
Good. We got a lot of pop-ups here going. Let me see if I can do this. Chester, sorry.
Yeah, uh, this morning, I was at a, a breakfast this morning with over 200 people, mayors, state attorneys, committeemen, state reps. And I felt stupid, cause they come up to me, not all of them, maybe a handful, what's wrong with your Glendale Heights mayor? What's wrong with your village? It's going downhill. Whatever Linda built up, it's being torn down in two years. I, I felt this big.
You are this big, you know. You are.
What?
What you said, this big.
Oh my gosh, you've got as much brains as a toad.
Let's, let's move, Mary.
Guys, we need to keep some decorum.
Yeah, kinda keep, uh, keep our cool. Mary's gonna say something. Mary, go ahead.
Lord help this man.
I would like to say something, Mike. You know, when I first became a trustee, when we got our agenda, which was on paper, not on this, we also got a printout of every check that was written. My biggest question to you and to the whole board is, how can someone write a check that the board is not aware of? And if we are aware of it, why aren't we stopping this? You just can't use this village money whenever you want to. What are they, what is all this money being spent for? I don't understand.
Lawsuits, lawyer fees.
These were all lawyer fees that these checks were made out for?
Yeah, that's correct. I got all this information from the, our finance department. These are for paid out, you know, our regular fee is different, you know, what we have been charged by the law. These are for the investigations done by Mr. Fowler, so. These are all the, all the invoices I have, I have done, pretty much spent my whole day going through all these things. So these are the numbers and it's still counting. And I just, if, uh, Mr. Chairman, allow me, if I can add some more, some more thing.
Real quick?
Yeah, sure. Uh, I wanna condemn the mayor's comments about Mr. Ontiveros. Ontiveros is a respected citizen of Glendale Heights and mayor should apologize. And on the behalf of board, I feel sorry and I wanna apologize to you and I feel ashamed to be part of this, sitting here when a mayor is calling a respected citizen a loser. That shouldn't be done. We should at least address each other respectfully. And this is becoming a common here. He can trash anyone. Right now, he thrashes Linda Jackson, who is also the citizen and ex-mayor. She also deserve a res, respect and due, uh, respect on, on that. Uh, I am really speechless, the way he is addressing people. I really, I'm sorry, Mr. Ontiveros, that you have to come all the way here and you are right, asking all the right questions. Because this is your money, this is your taxpayer money, which we are spending on this useless things. And this has been going on for the last one or two years. This is exactly what we have been going through. And when you ask, you've been called loser, shame on you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay.
Let me talk, let me expand.
Uh, Mike, is there anything else?
Let me.
No, sir, I, I'm done with my, my statement. I was just getting the responses back as they came.
Are you satisfied so far with the responses or?
Um, it could have been stronger in some instances, but that's, that's fine. At least that they're out there for the record and it's been addressed to some extent.
Well, I apologize for the board too, cause I am deputy mayor and calling you a loser is not, you don't call, you don't call a resident a loser. I, I don't care what, what the circumstances are. If you're mad at the person, you think about it, you don't say it, but you think it. You don't, you don't, you don't call a resident a loser. You just don't do that, so. I agree, and I apologize, Mike.
I thank you. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll refrain from additional comment, I'll remove myself. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, let me talk, you know, answer him, you know.
We'll give you one.
Uh, number one, uh, yes, number one, he's loser because he's litigant against me, you know. I'm talking in that context. I don't need apology, you know. I am the winner, you know, number one. Number two, Siddiki mentioned, you know, that I should apologize, you know. Shame on you, you are disgrace to this board, you are disgrace to the village of Glendale Heights. And you, if, if your relative is getting grown, you are doing anything and everything to get that contract, you know, under the table, you know. I'm using again same word, you know. He, he, he applied, you know, he, look, you know, the way he.
Nice, being nice.
I'm not saying anything. He's making faces. I am not saying anything.
I'll put you in a corner and put you in a corner. Be good, okay?
No, 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 just, I'm not saying anything. I mean, he devoured off, you know. Okay, I'm fine.
Done, done.
I'm done.
I have Obed on Zoom.
Okay. Let's, let's go Zoom.
Okay, because you, because you brought up my name, um, no, yes, I have, uh, spoken to Linda. If I disagreed with her plenty of times, I think I may have spoken to all the trustees. But the, but the difference is, the mayor never had people in the office that she didn't want me to see and then call the village administrator to tell him, I don't want her walking through my door. I don't want her walking down by my office. She can't go past the bathroom door because you're paranoid of who you're meeting with. I mean, that's, you know, that, that's how I took it, you're, you got paranoid because I saw somebody and your secretary ran in and said, oh. He said, hi, nice to see you, Becky, and I said, yeah, nice to see you too.
Ms. Tybor, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we're getting, we're getting into personnel issues that we should not be discussing, so.
Thank you.
But he, I was, you know, I was just responding because he mentioned my name and that, you know, Becky Tyber, she worked for the, uh, mayor for 20 years. Yes, we, we've had disagreements, but she's always done right for the village.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Tybor. You have so, it was somebody else you had, right?
Mr. Obed?
Yes, sir, I have just a question for all the trustees, that you've been like, some of them have been here like for 15 years, right? So how many times does the cricket field issue come before the mayor Kokar on the board meeting? I just have that question. And last, last year, you gave like the precaution to the guy, so how many have been implemented on that issue? That the guy present a meeting? That the guy present a meeting and a chart that what he will do to the cricket field? So how many of the things have been done so far? By the, like, the guy who is doing the, like, the cricket thing for the la- last year?
All right, I just want to remind the board, this is public comment, not a back and forth. You can, if you wish, but we've heard the topic.
Let me answer you, please. Um, the thing is, this board, number one, did not accept me as a mayor, you know, number one. Number two, I am against any corrupt practices, and these people cannot stop me, you know, from my way to proceed.
That's my, I'm done. Sorry. We gotta get this stuff wrapped up here.
Michael, can I get a few more minutes, since I was not utilized all my five?
You got about three left.
All right, well, I mean, Ms. Navarro Biers probably ran out in fifteen minutes. I, I'll keep it short. First of all, uh, a certain secretary provided driver services for the previous mayor, and offered the same thing to you, Mr. Koker, I remember you, and, and said you didn't need her to drive you around and chauffeur you around. Oh, um, Mr. Pojek, did you not refer to one of our constituents as an idiot, and was picked up on a mic, and you never publicly apologized? You put a letter out there. So if we're talking about apology, you should have given one, a public one, and the board should have censored. And talking about lawyer fees, I understand that the three members up for elections, their lawyer fees are being paid by the village.
No.
That is, that is incorrect.
That is not true.
That is incorrect.
That is not true. For the record, the village is not paying for any, anybody's private attorney to represent them at election board hearings. The village is required to pay for an attorney for the election board. That's because it's a body of the village. No other attorney fees are being paid.
Correct.
All right, I just wanted to get some clarifications, and also to, Mr. Sol Hale paid for all of your signage when you were up for elections all the time.
That's wrong.
Yes, that was, that was through Linda Jackson's, that's a quote, quid pro quo, paying Linda's.
That's wrong.
Election fund.
None for me, ever.
Uh, this, uh, this is on the record, Ms., uh, let me answer, please. Ms. Schroeder on the board.
Motion to adjourn.
No, listen, listen.
No, we, we, we cannot adjourn.
On, on, on.
Guys, 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 we're done.
Yeah, when there is a, you know, some, I want to say it is done, you know.
We got a motion to adjourn.
We cannot adjourn, we need to finish.
I just, but there is a motion on the floor to adjourn. The recommendation from the, from the administrator and myself would be not to adjourn, because there's still business we need to get to. But is there a second, is there a second to that motion?
No, that's fine, keep going.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, any other discussion from public, so I can close this.
Close it.
Closed, okay, we're closed on that. All right, we're going to, uh, committee recommendations. Uh, number one, Plan Commission, a recommendation to approve an application to an amendment to a conditional use ordinance twenty eighteen dash thirty-nine to allow a change to entitled ownership for May's Lounge, located at three twenty-five East Army Trail Road, Unit Six. Uh, can I get a motion? Uh, trustee Schmidt.
Move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second. Pat. Discussion. Discussion.
Does anybody want to hear from Mike, or no?
I can speak to that if you guys wish. The only thing that's occurring is a change in ownership.
Okay.
Exclusively, so, uh, if they're available, if you want to ask any questions, but that's the only thing that's occurring.
I'm okay with it so far. Anyone got any questions?
No.
Hey, we're good, I'm good.
No, we're good on it. All right, excellent. I guess, uh, roll call, vote? Is that what we're looking for in this? Yes.
Yes.
All right, roll call, vote.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Mayor Koker.
Yes.
All right, motion is moved, we'll move to the board with a recommendation to concur to approve. All right, um.
Discussion item number three.
Thank you.
Discussion item number three.
We're down, yeah, that's the last item.
Oh, I just got discussion item, there was only one discussion item.
Oh, the formulation of the committee to initiate.
Right, that's this one here. All right, uh, discussion regarding formulation of the committee to, in.
Initiate.
Initiate, Jesus, it's been a long night. Initiate and evaluate, and evaluate RFP for cricket.
All right, so just as a reminder, this was tabled at the last meeting. Uh, so to proceed, there would be a need to be a motion to remove this item from the table.
Phil Schmidt.
Move to remove the item from the table, second.
Second.
There is no discussion.
No discussion, we need roll call, or we're okay?
Roll call.
Roll call, vote, please.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Mayor Koker.
No.
All right, all right, it is now off the table.
Just open for discussion.
Pat?
Yeah, you know, all the stuff we have going on, we got the banquet hall, we got off the bed. I mean, we're doing work at the treatment plant, we got all kinds of jobs going on. I just like to, if, if, if the board approves it, I want it tabled until March second.
Yeah, March second, we have that emotion, then?
Yeah, I make them, well, I, I'd like to table it to the second of March.
Okay.
All right, do we have a second on that?
Chester.
Chester. Yeah, I'll second it.
Second it.
Roll call.
Disc- uh, discussion on this? No? Um, roll call, vote then, I guess.
Just a second.
Sorry, Mary.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Mayor Koker.
Yes.
All right, we'll table that till March second. Um, now I guess we got some other here. Uh, Mohammed, whistleblower protection.
Yeah, just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doug, do we have a whistleblower protection, or like someone who wanna address any, anything? Do we have a protection, or kind of any program for that?
It's written into our, um, sex harassment, harassment policy.
Okay, so anyone can?
And we have a separate policy on it.
So how does it work? Like, anyone can email anonymously? Like, you know, a person who wanna remain anonymous and wanna report something, how can he do that?
Well, depends on what the accusation is. But anonymous is, uh, we take anonymous complaints. If the anonymous complaint has merit, and is of a nature that's a violation of one of our policies, we will investigate it.
Okay, and how, like, is it a, an email box, or, or, or voicemail box, where a person can?
We don't have, we don't have an anonymous email box set up.
Yeah. I mean, let's say, if I wanna complain about something, and I wanna keep my identity hidden, how can I do that?
I don't really have a great answer for that question.
Okay, because, um, in a, any organizations, um, these things are taken very seriously, and they, they set up a, a, a kind of a email, like, you know, something which goes to the HR box, and, and a, and an employee who wanna report anything doesn't have a fear of retaliation. So they can do that, or, you know, there could be a, um, voicemail box, where you can leave a, a message, but, you know, just because your voice get recognized, email is, is more kind of anonymous thing. And, uh, so maybe we should set up a, uh, an email, and put it in our, uh, website or whatever, or, or let the employees know that.
We have, we have emails that people can send complaints to, and that kind of stuff to.
Okay.
I honestly don't, I'm not the computer guy, but I don't know how you do that anonymously, right? So if, if somebody doesn't want to leave their email address, and the. To show who, who sent the. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I'm not smart enough to know how you do that anonymously.
I mean, it's, send an email by, by any private account, or, or at least if they have this, uh, assurance that, you know, no one is going to track down who is this person, is, or if this, this person.
The confidentiality to human resources is built into our policy.
Okay.
And if you came to human resources with a complaint that is a sensitive nature, and a violation of our harassment, sex harassment policies, then that would be kept strictly confidential. And if I could add from a legal standpoint, the whistleblower policy is set for the anonymity doesn't filter into that, because that's what the policy protects, is somebody who does come forward. Right. So there's really no reason for anonymity.
Okay.
Because that, that policy does protect that person.
Yeah, but what, what, what Mohammed is saying, that that person is still known.
Known internally.
If, if somebody came, if, if somebody came to you and said something, okay, that per- that person will be known. I mean, his, his name and everything wouldn't be confidential.
So in order for a, in order for a complaint to be verified, we have to at some point have conversation with the complaint, whether that's through email, or through phone, or through in person. But in order for a complaint to be sustained and verified, we have to have communication with the person making the complaint. The purpose of the whistleblower, uh, policy is to protect the identity of the person doing the whistleblowing, whether that's in person, whether that is through email. We're not gonna release that information, right, to the best of our ability. But without the ability to do an investigation into a policy violation, uh, somebody, somebody sending us an email saying that Doug Flynn robbed a bank, I need you to investigate that, right? We're probably not gonna do much with that.
Yeah.
Right? But if somebody were to make a complaint that, you know, I did something of a policy violation nature of our harassment policy, we would investigate that, because it's a violation of our policy, alleged, right? And we need to ensure that, no matter whom the employee is, that our policies are being upheld, and, and investigating any potential or possible violations of that.
Right, but is there job in jeopardy?
The whistleblower?
That's no, right, that's, that's what I'm getting at, because.
That's the point of the policy, right? Yeah, the whistleblower's job is not, you know, unless the, unless the complaints are made up. And they're complete fabrications.
So in case if it's a fabricated complaint, what are the consequences?
Well, it could be, it could be a small, depending on what the nature of the complaint is, and the, and the length of investigation, and the accusations, uh, and the publicity, what, so many variables. I mean, it could be anything from, you know, a letter of reprimand to termination.
And depending if they're union or non-union.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's, it's, that's, that's a, too big of a what if.
Yeah, let me, um, be, make you easy. So if someone put a false allegations, and that has been investigated and comes to proven to be wrong, so there should be some consequences for that employee, then, correct?
Mr. Flint, let attorney talk, you know, legal issue.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but it depends on if it was intentionally, intentional to make it a false allegation, or the person was mistaken, are two different things. So the perception, during, during investigations, people's perceptions are not always what the actual facts bear out. And it's not, the people that are making the accusations, uh, you know, through various degrees of stress, through various degrees of interpretation, through various degrees of a lot of things, don't always interpret things the same way that other people interpret things. Investigations don't always turn out to be what the people that are making a complaint say it is, because of a lot of reasons. Doesn't mean that the actual complaint was made up, falsified, or untrue, the interpretation of that. When we do an investigation in the police department, if, you know, there is so many variables that go into somebody's complaint, uh, whether it's a fight, whether it's a domestic, whether it's a, whatever it is, so many variables go into somebody's complaint, that you misinterpret sometimes the, what is taking place. And that all, that doesn't mean that what the person is saying is fabricated, or un- untrue, it's how they interpreted that moment in time. And sometimes things play out, and the result of things, investigations turn out to be different. And doesn't mean that the start of it wasn't a valid thing. It's the whole purpose of investigations, right, is to investigate, find out, and then make a determination if something was true, untrue, somebody's guilty, not guilty, we need to arrest somebody, not arrest somebody, so, I mean.
It's quite a landy, okay, let's, let's.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a very slippery slope.
Yeah, I had to get.
That is very hard to answer.
And I, I know, we have a limited time, just to quickly, um, I know we, do we have a, like, a review process of our employees? Like, every year, we do the review of our employees, uh, how they do, or?
Well, I will, I will say that, um, some departments are better than others. And not every employee, every year has been reviewed, and we need to work on that, and be better about that.
Okay.
But generally speaking, yes.
Yes, okay, so at the same time, do we have any reviews about our department heads, or, or, or even the boards? Or, I mean, do, did we, did we even ask the employees how the, the management is doing, or how the?
So we haven't, we haven't done three sixty degree reviews.
Okay.
Um, department head reviews are a work in progress, but we don't.
I'm not talking about the department head reviews.
We don't, we don't, we, we ju- we haven't done, what we've done a lot of is self-reviews. We've done some peer reviews. We haven't done a full three sixty review.
Yeah, because, you know, what I'm talking about is where I work. I mean, I've been working for the last twenty years, and so when I go to my manager for my review, we sit, but at the same time, the employees also get a chance that they can review how the management is doing. Do we have that model here? No.
Not, not outside of conversations that you have with your employees that, who aren't afraid to tell you that you're doing something right or wrong.
Yeah, so that's what I'm ta- talking about. We need to know that, and it, and that.
That happens every day.
That, I mean.
Nicole tells me every day.
Yeah, no, I'm, I need something like, you know, that the employees can freely said what, what they think about the upper management. And, and if they can, you know, we can have some data on that.
I, I would, I would, I can tell you that department heads have many employees under their purview that have frank discussions about things within their departments and divisions on a daily basis, and they keep everybody accountable.
That's fine, those are all the verbal, but I am talking about the mostly, officially, though. So we can track down on yearly basis, okay, what, which department is doing, what, where we, so we can track down all, all those things. That's what I'm talking about. I mean, I can discuss with my manager on a, on a cooler, or on a coffee, that, hey, you know what?
Historically, we have not done that.
Yes, okay, so are we planning to do that, or?
Well, it's something that we can try and work into the HR process, uh.
Or, let me ask you this, are we utilizing the HR hundred percent?
Huh?
Are we utilizing HR hundred percent, or is it?
Uh, two hundred.
Two hundred, okay.
We're, and we're short a person, right? So, uh, the, what, I don't want to get into all of.
That's fine. I know, it's already too late. Thank you very much, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
I got, I got, I got, I got a question. Peter.
Yes.
Years ago, the board had two attorneys, one for the trustees. Years ago, the board had two attorneys, one for the trustees, and one for the mayor and the board. How do we go about the trustees getting their own attorney without the mayor? Just, just for the trustees alone?
Well, it's not a normal procedure. It's not normal, um, and it's not recommended, uh, 'cause the board is, is one unit, um.
Well, I mean, I mean, all these accusations going around, I mean, I know we had an investigation, but if, if the trustees had their own attorney to really dig into these allegations.
There would be chaos.
Yes. Yeah, there'd be chaos, right.
If, if you had two attorneys, there would be chaos.
You've, you've, you've essentially had a second attorney here with the investigations that were done.
Correct.
Two attorneys on two separate agendas with two separate, um, uh, ways of wanting to do things, double the cost. It is not a way to unify, it's not a way to get policy done, it's not a way to, it's not good governance, I don't think, to do that. And it's not a.
It already even work.
It's not a normal procedure.
No.
No.
It's very, under very extreme, uh, circumstances that something like that would happen. Not for normal functioning of government.
Okay.
All right, then.
Answer my question.
I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, or we on?
You could do voice vote.
Voice vote. All in favor?
All right. I.
Opposed?
Me.
I opposed. All right, motion is carries, and.
Wait, mayor, back to the board meeting?
Mohammed made the motion.
Yeah.
Pat seconded.
Thank you.
So far, executive session.
Is it adjourned?
Well, the, the COW is adjourned, you're back.
Uh, we now reconvene to village board meeting. Is there a motion?
If I can, mayor. We would need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body pursuant to the Open Meeting Act 5 ILCS 120/2C1.
Motion.